I'm Vice Chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the Baltimore City Council. The Chairman, Vice President Riceinger, is caught in traffic. He should be here shortly, but we're going to get started. We're here this afternoon to conduct our 22nd work session on City Council Bill 1201-52, Transform Baltimore Zoning. During our 21st work session held on Tuesday, February 3rd, 2015, we worked on Title 15, Site Development, on pages 245 to 262. Today, we will continue our review of Title 16, starting on line one of page 263, and work on as much as we can during today's session in two hours. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the bill by reviewing it page by page, starting with Title 1 and continuing through the bill in the order it was written. City agencies and public will be asked to participate by raising their questions or comments as the committee is discussing the page they have a comment or question regarding. I encourage everyone to visit the City Council's website, www.baltimorecitycouncil.com, to stay updated with the section of the bill the Land Use and Transportation Committee is working on at each work session. In addition to the currently scheduled series of work sessions, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will likely hold additional hearings and work sessions. Information about those will be distributed to the public as soon as dates, times, and topics are selected. Again, please check the Baltimore City Council's website for the most up-to-date information. If you are unable to attend the scheduled work session and you wish to provide written comments and/or amendments, please mail it to the Office of City Council Services. Attention, Jennifer Coats, 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore, Maryland 21202, or via email at jennifer.coats@baltimorecity.gov. The Vice President's number-one ground rule is turn off all cell phones. And, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Chairman, I have not done any of the introductions of everybody, so if you want to do that, I'll turn it over to you. But I have read all the introductions.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Appreciate it. First of all, I apologize for being late. It's traffic in Baltimore City. I know you understand that. Welcome, City Council Chambers. You did all that, right?
Yeah, we did.
Mr. introduction.
I just didn't introduce you up here.
Okay. We are joined by City Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, to my far left. Second left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. To my immediate left is the Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Jerrym Craft. We're also joined by Angela Gibson, representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake. To my immediate, to my far right is Kara Kunst, and Paul Plymouth, representing the President of the City Council, Bernard Jack Young. To my immediate right is Jennifer Coats, who was the staff person to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We are now on Title 16, which is Off-Street Parking and Loading. Purpose of the title, as I said, is off-street parking and loading regulations of this title. And so, we will start with page 263 through page 279. We're looking at the amendments. I see, I'll restart off with the, as a courtesy to the committee members, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. I'll call on you.
I don't have anything on this page.
Okay, you don't?
No. Oh. It's Stephanie, and that's harder than being me.
Yeah, got it. Which, where should I start at? 269? Okay, thank you.
Mary Pat?
Yes.
Oh, I got, oh, I got it. I'm sorry. There it is. Thank you. All right.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna start on page 263, but before we begin that, looking, looking at Title 16, I noticed that, seeing that, can you hear me? Yeah. Is that there's some, there's tables in this. So, if there's any amendments related to tables, we'll deal with that when we do tables.
I put, I just put these two tables in because they're referenced in a couple places where I'm making an amendment. So, I wasn't amending the tables. I was just seeing so people could see.
Am I, am I targeting you? I'm just giving clarity on, to have a look at your amendment check.
Right. Put it on the table.
Yeah, we'll put it on, we'll put the tables on the table. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Page 263. Any amendments on 263, planning?
Mr. Chairman, just to, for the committee's benefit, you have the agency comments for the entire code, and the Parking Authority, who's here, worked very closely with us in those comments. And I'm not gonna go over them unless, you know, there's relevance, but if Melissa, you know, I just wanted to let the committee know that the city agencies, and I think in this chapter, it was mostly planning, law, and parking, had worked together on the, the whole report. And I'll defer to Melissa if she wants to explain anything further.
So, thank you very much. We are joined by Councilman Bill Henry, to my right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Entering the council chambers. So, does anyone have any amendments to discuss on page 263? No?
And so?
No. Page, uh, two, page 264? Page 264?
I'll be there.
Okay. Page 265?
For me to explain my email?
On the, on 265, on line 34?
Give me, give us the, Joan, give us, Ms. Floyd, give us the, the line?
34.
Line 34?
34, and 35, I guess. So, this represents, I believe, an increase, I think the current is 300 feet, and this is a 600 feet. And my, my question is whether we have any data or studies or anything that support the, this particular choice of, of distance, so that we know that this will actually work, rather than be, become just a problem.
Okay. Does, does, can you watch the issue?
I can answer that a little bit, and the Parking Authority may speak to us. Essentially, what this does is say that you can have your required parking facility up to 600 feet away from the use. And yes, the current code says 300 feet. Just for point of reference, 300 feet is the length of a city block. So, this says you can go from one block away to two blocks away. In our work, we heard loud and clear that we needed this flexibility as a city, and that two blocks was a very reasonable walking distance for a business use. And so, it, I don't know that there were detailed studies, per se, but it was something we heard very clearly from, you know, both builders, as well as users, tenants, that two blocks was within. And Parking Authority may have more information as well.
Have to use the analogy of football. That's two football fields, 600 feet, yeah.
I don't know anything about football. I, I use city blocks, but it's two blocks.
Okay. Councilman Craft, you want a question?
So, so what it means is, if someone's directed to off-street parking, they have, they have two more blocks in the neighborhood.
One more.
One more. They have one more block in the neighborhood to try to find a parking space before they hit the parking garage.
No, 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 no. This is for, if a use, a store, wants to open, and they need 10 parking spaces, and they have no parking in their building, or on their property, currently, the code allows them to count leased parking?
That's exactly what I just said.
I thought you said, I thought you said, "one more space for on-street." This has nothing to do with on-street. Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. Yes?
I said, "one more block to look for."
Sorry. Yeah, I thought you were talking about the driver looking for, not the, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Does Parking Authority want to respond to that, regards to, do you have, I think Ms. Floyd's question is, do you have any, any examples why we did the extra 300?
I think we should.
I do, too. I just want to, this isn't, this is being tal, this is being televised, so, so our listening audience can hear what the dialogue is. Go ahead.
So, I'm Pete Little, Executive Director of the Parking Authority. The parking industry standard is, in terms of acceptable walking distances, is typically three blocks. So, this would still be within that industry standard for, for parking for a facility.
Okay. All right.
My, my concern was not the parking industry. My concern was the people who live in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And them being able to find a parking place in their neighborhood, because, as we all know, you know, people are going to park for free before they pay to park in a parking facility. So, the further away you make the parking facility from the facility for which the parking facility has been created, the more opportunity there is for that person to see an on-street parking space and use that on-street parking space. That's...
Yeah, and that's why we've, the city's developed residential permit parking and parking meter program as well, too, to really force those folks into that off-street facility. But I, you know, I'm sure Laurie can get into it as well, too. There've been plenty of circumstances where historic buildings have been renovated. Wouldn't have happened if that parking associated with it couldn't have been a block or two, or sometimes even three blocks away.
I understand. I'm just raising the issue.
Yep. But we can, we can amend to 300.
If you want, yeah.
I'd like to.
Bring it to the table. But the committee will, the committee could look at it if they want to amend it.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to recommend that we look at it to amend.
Back to 300?
Back to 300.
Okay. That's something we could discuss, yeah.
That's 60 of me.
Okay.
Already. I think I've amended.
Anyone, anyone else have any amendments, or amendment, or discussion on page 265? Page 266? Page 266? Councilman Craft?
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were getting ready to move.
No, I'm ready now. Page 267? Anything on page 267?
Okay, I have.
I didn't have an amendment.
Okay.
We're going back to, is it 266?
267.
267.
Right. So, I want to talk about curb cuts.
I'm sorry. I wish I could actually win money when I lived back in my hometown.
So, um, so, let me ask, Ms. Collins, how does this jive with the curb cut policy that we've just implemented?
Is there a special line, or you just go and hold what is?
Uh, my understanding, we have a curb cut policy that was just implemented by Mr. Sharkey, or just put together? Huh?
The curb cut policy has been in place with General Services. It was recently revised.
Revised? I mean, the revised?
Yes.
Curb cut policy. So, how does that pair with what is here? Because I haven't an op, I haven't had an opportunity to, to look at the two of them.
Marsha Collins, representing Department of Public Perks and Department of General Services. I was just scrolling through my emails to see if I could find the latest discussion. But, right now, what we do is work closely with DOT to coordinate what is considered. If you could give me a few minutes, I'll try and find the recent revisions.
Yeah. Go ahead, do what you gotta do. Planning?
Yeah. While, while she's looking for the specifics, this was obviously crafted prior to the revisions, but it is consistent. This would be, the code, are the, the standards, so this section 16405 has the, the general standards and criteria, and then the policy is exactly the operational pieces of DGS. They are not in conflict.
Okay. Can I, let me, okay. Let me, can I finish?
No. This is law. That's policy.
Okay. Would I, and I don't have specific wording, because I want to look at the, the policy again versus the, this section of the code, but I want, whether, I want it in the law to be clearer. I want to remove some of the discretion.
Okay.
So, that we don't have this constant bickering over, you know, why did, you know, Sally get it, and why did Jack not?
I think that we could work with the General Services staff. We were very involved in the recent update of the policy, and I think all would agree that the revised policy recently put into place is both clearer and stricter than what DGS had been operating under prior to that. And, you know, I would just want DGS to kind of look at what sections belong in law versus, you know, like I said, this 14, 16405 was written prior to the new policy. And there may be pieces, I, I know there's no conflict, but there may be pieces where there are certain sections of the policy that actually should be in the code. And, and law may want to weigh in on that. But, we're, we're 100% in support of the new policy.
Right. I mean, I...
Revised policy.
Yes.
Yeah, the revised part.
Marsha Collins, again, for General Services and DPW. We'd be glad to go back and look. In, in the emails, the series that I had was more speaking to the section of the code under which we apply these administrative policies to, which is this broad category called "street cuts," which deals with anything from a curb cut to excavating in the street and permits and so on. So, we would be happy to go back and work with planning to come up with some kind of language that would perhaps satisfy your concerns, or at least to be considered.
Right. You know, driveways, I understand driveways and that sort of thing. These, the curb cuts are just, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
First of all, it's Councilwoman Clark, and then Councilman Henry. And remember to use the microphone, because we're being televised.
No, this is just a, a comment. Basically, by the time this gets approved, won't curb cuts be in DOT?
They will probably be in DOT before this gets approved, unless you're going to get this done by July 1. July 1 is the point at which all the rights-of-way services go over.
Is there going to be a Department of General Services? I mean, maybe it doesn't matter, but I just mentioned that it references the Department of General Services, which is, well, I guess that will still exist, but it won't have curb cuts.
Correct.
Review and approval from Transportation.
Right.
Yes, it does.
There are numerous agency references that were put in this draft in 2012, when it was, '11, when it was written. Right. And I'm sure all those agency references will have to be reviewed prior, and, exactly. Legislative reference will pick that up.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not, you know.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Clark, are you?
That's it.
Okay. Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm, I'm raising this issue because I am currently at the beginning of a conversation with the Department of Transportation over the fact that the code specifically reserves the power to address parking restrictions and sobbing restrictions on the streets of Baltimore to the mayor and city council by ordinance. And that DOT has gotten out of the habit of using their administrative order process to do temporary, much less permanent, parking restriction changes. I mention this because I do not think that the code as currently written makes a specific exemption for the curb cut policy. And effectively, the creation of a new curb cut creates a parking restriction on the streets of Baltimore. And so, I raise this issue to say that if it is not already addressed in that policy, my, and I, I would ask the Law Department for an interpretation of this, not being a lawyer myself, but my reading of the code would seem to imply that a curb cut should require, at the minimum, an administrative order that comes through the council for review. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be an ordinance unless that order, for some reason, is objected to, but since the curb cut is creating a parking restriction, that seems to be something that should be coming to the council at some point in the process.
I will, I'm, I'm recalling this from memory, so keep that in mind when I speak. I may have to correct myself later, but my understanding was part of that process that we go through, is to look at, with the loss of that parking space on-street, are we providing additional parking for cars that would otherwise be on the street, or are we losing one and gaining one? I, I think there are, the issue of what is to be gained by the curb cut is part of that policy process.
And I'm raising this issue not in any way to imply that the department is making bad decisions. That's not my point.
I understand your point.
But merely in terms of, I think that legally...
It's the procedure.
The procedure, I, I believe that legally, because a parking restriction is being created by that curb cut, the council, either legally, the council needs to be involved, or we need to change the code so as to create an exemption for the curb cut process. I know where I would come down on that choice, but I, I mention it just to bring the committee's attention to that, because whichever we did would probably be legislation coming to this committee.
When Transportation was part of DPW, we did do administrative orders, and typically, they go to the secretary, they're, they're noted, I believe, they were noted, I believe, on the agenda. There was a period of time in which council members could comment, and then, if there were no comment or no changes, it became adopted.
But they, but, and this went on for years and years and years, but if, it was just like the sale of properties that get journalized. If the council member in the affected district objected to the journalized action, then it got removed and introduced as an ordinance to be heard, you know, in a regular public session.
Correct.
And I noticed when I came back here in 2004, that that had stopped happening. And the journalization of, like, no write-on-read. And I remember telling my husband, he accidentally turned write-on-read one day, and I said, "Well, don't worry, because it's really not a law, because they haven't journalized anything for years." And I have spoken to predecessor DOT directors about this, that really, it's required to be done, and it's really a good thing to require. I know we're talking about curb cuts, but the whole issue of the requirement for city council approval got, you know, got put on a quick track by the journalization. We used to have hearings on, I mean, hearings, in the old Highways and Franchises Committee about very minute things like this.
Yes, I sat through many of those.
That's up to many of you.
And you do.
Yeah, Angela Gibson reminded me that when we went through that administrative process, that once it was approved, copies also went to Legislative Reference, so that they were there on file. Thank you, Angela.
I think Councilman, are you finished, Councilwoman? I think Councilwoman Clark, I mean, Councilman Craft?
I'm finished.
This, this really is not directly on what you were saying, but it just triggered something that Councilwoman said about having these things journalized, and then having them voted on if they weren't journalized. And, and then the question is whether any of these things have really been done legally over the years, or whether they just are there and now in existence. And so, it posed a question I was thinking about the other day, and it, and I just want to put it on the table for the Law Department to check, or maybe somebody else, or Angela, or somebody. But, and that's the whole question of executive orders. You know, the mayor issues executive orders, and, you know, once an executive order is issued, that executive order is in effect, I would assume, until it is rescinded. Whether it's rescinded by that mayor, or by some subsequent mayor, once the order is in, it's in. And so, my question is, is, you know, somewhere, is there, like, a journal of the executive orders that we could see and say, you know, what are the executive orders? And, you know, what, what's in effect? What isn't in effect? You know, because there are certain things that certain mayors do, or have done, that aren't being done by other mayors, that maybe should, should be done because they were good ideas, or maybe shouldn't be done because they were bad ideas, but we don't even know about it, because there's no place to go to confirm, or whatever. So, can we try to find that out, too? Because, and that might have some effect on some of this, because, you know, at some point, some mayor may have made some decision about something in this enormous code that we're dealing with, that maybe we want to deal with legislatively, and need to deal with legislatively, that we could correct, or something. So, if we could try to find that, that, I think, may be helpful.
All right. Before we move on, I just want to, on line 32, regards to curb cuts, number three, when it says, "The city reserves the right to deny a curb cut," when you say, "the city," what, who, who's going to have that, make that decision?
Hey, Julian.
Because I see that, I see that General Services does the permit, but then it gets, then it gets reviewed and approved by Transportation, Planning, on this, so...
General Serv, the issuer, the agency that actually issues the permit, they collect the comments and make the final decision today, and it's General Services. If that changes to DOT, then we fix that change, but...
Okay. I, I just want to, Ms. Gibson, I strongly believe, I don't think they're here today, but I strongly want to comment that Transportation should have been at the scene today, so...
Yes, they invited you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, it is correct. It would, it's connected to a permit issuance, so ultimately, it lands with the permit issuer, which in this case would, at this point in time, be General Services.
Okay. Anyone else on page 267? Ms. Floyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back up higher on the page to Section D, which is lines 3 to 11, just want to bring some context to the committee's attention. I don't think, I think a lot of people, a lot of residents are not currently aware of some of the innovations, including the idea of a minimum pervious surface, or in this kind of issue. Now, one thing they're really aware of are parking problems. And, I mean, I'm just going to take a couple seconds here. I have certainly seen, out my window, many parking pads created since I've lived in my house for just under 20 years. And I also know that this is one of the things people think of doing when parking problems get worse and worse. So, I think that we need to make sure we're not doing things with parking policy that are going to make people feel like they need to do this, and then they will find out they can't do this, creating a parking pad. I, I think is, I think somehow, there needs to be an awareness of this issue out there in the, the city, and also, we need to make sure we're not creating more of a squeeze on street parking that's going to make more people want to do this paving over.
I get it. And your comment... I get it, and your comments are totally noted.
Can I?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't, I'm not sure I do understand what you're saying, that, my question in this parking pad issue was about pervious versus impervious. I mean, it seems to, but, but that's not, my question to you is, what are you saying? That by suggesting a parking, that, that houses are allowed to have a parking pad, that, what, what would be the result?
Well, I'm, I don't have a fully formed way to go with this issue today, because I think this is one of those issues that really needs to be aired pretty well out there. But when I hear people in my neighborhood saying, "Somebody's about to take away 30 street spaces, I'm going to need to pave over my backyard," and that's happening right now, okay?
Right.
And that person may actually learn, you know, two years' time, that he actually can't do that.
Why can't you?
He can't because he will exceed the limit on impervious surface, right? Isn't that what this is, isn't that what this is about? The impervious surface...
Let's, let's give it to you.
The, the limit on impervious surface is not in this section, is, it is in the tables for residential, and that was something that was vetted by the Office of Sustainability and others. This simply says, "You can't put the pad in your front yard or side yard if it's your required yard." So it makes it clear that it needs to be in the back, and we changed the language to minimum impervious surface. We know the sort of whole world of pervious surfaces are changing.
Yes, they don't have...
And so, we tried to make the requirements as minimal as possible to, you know, encourage people to do off-street parking where they could. But the requirement about your total amount of impervious surface is in tables, and it would be in Title IX tables.
Okay, well, we'll deal with tables. Councilwoman?
So why couldn't we say that if you were going to create off-street parking, put a parking pad back here like we're talking about, that you could only do it if you had a pervious surface, and you could not have impervious surface?
Well, I'm not expert in this area, but there's a lot of new thoughts and concerns. What, what people don't realize, that parking on the gravel or the dirt is generally not better for the environment than paving it.
There's other, there are other...
And there are other options.
There's lots of other pervious options.
Right, no, I understand. There's a lot of other options. But I think probably the way to do it would be in the table that talks about maximum coverage, to, you know, put a note there that if the parking is certified impervious, you could, I mean pervious, it could be exempt from the total maximum, something along those lines.
It makes no sense...
I don't think it goes here, is my only point.
It makes no sense to me whatsoever that we are, that we impose a stormwater fee here, we're paying people to take up asphalt, concrete, put down grass, and we're saying in the law that if you want to put a parking pad in your backyard, you got to lay down concrete. It just makes...
That's not what this says, but I think I would like to...
It says impervious surface.
This speaks to the minimum amount. What this is reflecting is that this code permits the wheel strips, so you don't have to pave the whole area, it's just where the tires go. If, if it's okay with the committee, I would rather have the folks that deal with that in sustainability and in the housing code have a separate discussion with the committee on that, because that's not really the intention here. And I think if we want to credit folks differently for doing creative pervious surfaces for their parking...
I want to say they can't concrete the backyard. That's what I want to say, that you cannot come in and put concrete all over your backyard just to have a parking pad.
Okay, well, again, I think we need to discuss that in the tables, because that's where that's reflected.
When it gets to tables, we'll deal with it at the table.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Is that it?
Well, I just think, and I just think that it's obviously a subject that needs to be talked about, but also, let's not, let's not have parking, off-street parking, on-street parking policy that's going to encourage people to have to do this, I would suggest.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Floyd. Anyone else on page 267? 267? Okay, now we are on page 268. Anyone have any amendments to discuss it on page 268? You're, you're the next page. Yeah, go ahead.
But I have a question.
Okay, go ahead. Use the microphone.
I will. Sorry. This is not an amendment, this is a question. It's not written down anyplace. I'm looking at 16-407, and I'm asking this question. In this section, does the use of semi-pervious materials conform with all other building code restrictions to ensure ready access to related permits upon construction? In other words, and I'm looking at lines 12 and 13, and lines 18 and 19. Because I, my understanding is that at this moment in our lives, it's hard to get a permit to do a pervious surface as described as being semi-perv, like, for example, lines 11 and 12, " Semi-pervious materials such as grass, crete, and pervious pavers may also be used." I've heard that, but I've also heard, and then down in lines 18, 19, " Semi-pervious materials such as grass, grass, crete, pervious pavers, and gravel." So we're talking about things that I'm not certain we have, the code will permit. I wish it would, I hope it will, but right now, I'm not certain some people get to do it, and other people are turned down, and I don't understand.
I think those issues, when they're on private property, someone's backyard, they get a building permit through the housing department, and they reviewed this language and said it's fine. So I think I'd have to defer to housing, that they would issue that permit. Obviously, it's on street, or, you know, then it's different because that's a...
No, 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 this is private property.
Then that's a transportation issue, but...
But, I mean, I've been involved in these kinds of efforts, and I...
I think the question would be for housing, but we wrote this with them, and they were comfortable with this language.
Yeah, okay. So, so you want me to check with housing?
Yes, yes. If you have an amendment, then you bring it, you do an amendment.
Okay, all right. I, I'm for it.
Finished, Councilwoman?
I am.
Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton?
Just the question for, on page 268, 16-410, the lighting. Is, is there, can this whole thing be placed under or with 15-505? Is there some reason why that's, that statement is under 16?
It's always tricky with areas that fall in different titles, or, we did it by cross-reference. Could it be there? Yes, and then we'd put the cross-reference, I mean, there, I think there's a drafting judgment call at a certain point on where a requirement lands, and then where a corresponding cross-reference goes. If it's, if it's, people believe it's clear, I don't think substantively it makes a difference, as long as you have the reverse cross-reference. Do you know what I'm saying?
I understand. Keeps people from going back and forth to different...
I think, you know, we, we went through this round and round and round. Unfortunately, there is no perfect solution, and cross-references help. As a side note, our hope and intention in the drafting is, once it is finally adopted, when there's an electronic version for the user's sake, something like that cross-reference would be a live link, so you're reading it on your screen, and it would, it would click, whichever direction, both directions.
Thank you. Understood.
Okay, okay. Since there's no other on page 268, we will now go on to page 269. Councilwoman Clark, I see you have some amendments.
All right. These are permitted parking alternatives is the subtitle that we're under, and I'm all the way down on line 37 on that page, land-banked future parking. Basically, what, what's being said here is that it'll, a des, like, let's say you're building something, and you have to have a certain number of parking spaces. You could land-bank up to 50%
Thank you.
...of the required parking. As I'm reading this, I'm, I stand to be corrected.
25.
Yeah, it's 25%.
Oh, it's 25. Well, then, thank you, because that's, yeah, that's, it's in another place if we get up to 50. I'm sorry, it's another, it's another amendment. So I would, so basically, up to 25% of the required parking spaces could be land-banked at the approval of the department, not the commission, the Department of Planning. I would amend that. That's a, that's a variance. And I would amend that section on lines 37 to 42 to give that authority to the zoning board. So I would say the zoning board may grant land-banking up to 25% of the required parking spaces, not, not through site plan review, but as a conditional use, subject to public hearing and the requirements of this section. And then I would add, "This set aside land must not be developed and must remain as open space available for additional parking spaces if the zoning administrator determines that the existing onsite parking spaces are insufficient to handle demand." So basically, what my amendment does is it makes, it throws it into a public process. It's a 25% variance.
You want to go in front of the zoning board? It's the zoning board...
The zoning board to hear it, and you want a public hearing and a posting? Because it's a big deal to take 25% of required parking away and land-bank it. All right, that's it.
Anybody want to respond to that?
Just for the committee...
Show amendment, yeah.
Oh. Just for the committee's information, the, the history of this, this comes from national practices. It really is an environmental sensitivity, that there are certain circumstances, certain uses, where the requirement may just be higher than is really desirable or wanted by a community, and they'd rather have the green space. This would provide a tool to give that flexibility, and then if circumstances change, you'd take it away. There's nothing worse than paving more than you need. And so, we, we really want that tool there. I mean, I think we would prefer to leave it as is. If you want it to go to the board, you know, so be it.
I really do.
It is a very important...
Yeah, it's not like they won't grant, well, it's a variance. It is a variance.
It, it's a very important environmental tool, so I just don't want to lose it.
Well, I mean, this is a, so, that, that takes us back to building pads in your backyard, I guess, but I would like it to be a public hearing and process, not site plan review. I, I have nothing against site plan review, having never been invited to one. It's just a pretty private affair.
Councilwoman, it's, no, we get it. I mean, you want it to be, for it to go in front of the zoning board, so the public, the public can have a voice on what's happening.
Right, and it's a variance, so it's possible the zoning board might not grant it because of the restrictions on their ability to grant variances.
Opportunity to go in front of the zoning board instead of having an agency...
Some agency, people sit around a table and decide that.
Okay. Anyone else on page 269? Okay, so now we are on...
Oh, because I'm...
Page two...
I'm next, I got it, I'm on the next page.
270?
Yeah. Oh, I'll be right. I do have a couple of amendments.
You have four, you have four amendments on that page, page 270?
I may want, if I may suggest, in, in the essence of...
Councilwoman Clark, you have...
I have a couple of amend, I have a couple amendments on this page.
Okay, so there's nothing related to tables, just a short, just, okay?
To save time, we're in sync with the Councilwoman on her amendment three and four, and the agencies had already recommended deleting 16-503B and 16-504 in its entirety.
Okay, so let me get to my, can I just see what that means?
Go ahead.
Okay, let, thank you. Okay, so let me go to amendment two on page 270, because I, there, there's not a consensus there. So basically, amendment, my amendment two, page 270, lines seven and eight, I left in, I, I'm moving the 25% greening set aside to zoning board as a variance. But I left in the sentence that said, "As part of the site review process, the applicant must show the area to be banked on the site plan and marked as land-banked future parking." If there is a site plan review, not, not that that would be the permitting agency, in other words, maybe there's a site plan review before you go to the zoning board for your variance. So I just left that in, so I just said, if it's, basically, if that's required, if you're going through that process, and you have to have a map, let the map say what they say. It's not a big deal. Okay, so then, I've got, now we're on consensus time, I think, about on right-of-way parking bonus. Basically, I know you don't, nobody means this, this can't be true. So I'm recommending amendment four, that we just delete the whole section. I think that planning just indicated that that's what you are recommending.
You're good with, what, two, three, or four?
Well, the agencies had recommended removing just section B, and I would defer to the parking authority on the proposal for section A to be removed. We also, the agencies also recommended deleting 504 in its entirety.
Fee in lieu of parking reduction?
Yeah, it's an innovative concept, but the conclusion was that we're not quite there yet and ready.
Right, and they don't have enough cells left.
We, you know, obviously, maybe someday, we, as a city, may be ready for that, but we're not there.
Right, I totally agree. We are not ready to pay to not do parking. So you're agreed to eliminate entire 16-504 fee in lieu of parking reductions?
Right. On your amendment...
Five.
On the Councilwoman's amendment five, we're in 100% agreement, and I will defer to the parking authority. The agencies did agree on part of your amendment three.
Okay, let me go, let me go back to that then, so we can talk about that. Is that okay? Go back up? All right.
What, amendment three?
Let me go to my amendment three. All right. Basically, what I'm doing here is taking IMU out of this section. The IMU.
And even C2.
I, I mean, I don't have a lot of C2s, although I do have some. I think it's really bad policy to be, let me make sure I'm saying the right thing at the right place here, if you don't mind. 16-503, I'm on the wrong... I'm on the wrong page.
To page 270.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wrote the wrong page number. I'm not at this amendment three until the next page. I'm sorry. It's not, it's on page, it is on page two. Are we okay? Okay.
And councilwoman, I mean, you're saying that amendment two, again, amendment two, three, and four, planning agrees with the councilwoman, correct?
I didn't say that. They agreed with me on amendment five. I'd be happy.
One, two, yeah. Right.
Planning said
Let her repeat what she
We're deferring to the parking authority. Amendment three and four are kind of an either-or, so they should probably be discussed together. And we're in agreement on amendment five, and we're okay with one and two.
Basically, as I understand it, and I haven't read it since Sunday, and today is already Wednesday, as I understand it, you can get, you can count parking spaces that are in the right-of-way as part of your required parking spaces for something, for some development. These are street parking spaces, basically, as I, that's how I interpret right-of-way, especially when they talk about along the perimeter of a site. So, my first thing was, oh, my gosh, I've got all these IMUs. Get them out of this if this thing passes. We, I mean, we got IMUs in Remington with all kinds of development going on. Lord knows, we can't count street parking as the developers meeting any parking requirements if that's what it's saying here. It's nuts, it's crazy.
Parking authority, you want to respond to councilwoman Clark?
Sure. This is a current best practice in a lot of cities, and what it does for us is to encourage developers not to ask for numerous curb cuts, not to ask for loading zones, not to ask for other things that would restrict on-street parking. And it's not in lieu of necessarily that off-street parking requirement, but, you know, can add to it. So, it is a best practice, could help us as well, too, to conserve on-street parking because it would incentivize developers to not, like I said, request curb cuts and other things like that, that would reduce on-street parking.
I would, note line 15, the word "new" on right-of-way parking, so I think the idea is this would be used when there's an opportunity to do angle parking, or remove a curb cut, or that sort of thing.
I mean, no. Basically, I, no. I'm just, came through two years of a fight, and we are just going into two years in another adjacent neighborhood of a development.
I don't want to revisit that. Go ahead.
No, it's a different neighborhood, but we don't want to, I mean, we can't have this, as, we can't do this. We can't count free curb parking as counting toward what a development under the law requires in terms of parking spaces based on its use and dimensions. It's, we're already letting people do the night and day thing, which, I'm not here to argue with that. I'm a conservative person. So, all right, the offices, they all leave at 5:00, and everybody has a regular job, and they have a job, and so they come home at 5:00. Okay, okay. But not to count a curbside free parking space toward the required off-street parking. It's not in my, or take my district out.
If I could just add one more thing, and, you know, I say it around the parking authority all the time, a parking space is a parking space is a parking space. Doesn't matter where it is, it can be off-street, it can be on-street, it adds to that parking inventory. And, you know, it's, we should also be concerned about the over-creation of parking, building far too much parking than is needed. And so, this helps to take that into consideration as well, too, that a parking space on-street also serves that community and that development, and not just the off-street parking. So, I just wanted to add that.
McCray?
I've heard my colleague from the 14th district called many things over the 40 years that I've known her, but I've never heard her called conservative. I have agreed with her, I've agreed with my colleague on most things throughout this zoning code, but this is one thing that I'm going to disagree with her on. I think, and I would say that there's probably not a district in the city that has worse parking problems than mine. There are probably some that have many, but collectively, I don't think there's one that has more across the board than mine does. You can't keep, you can't keep building, you can't keep building a city for cars. You have to build a city for people. And to, every single time that something gets built, to make sure that you are accommodating the cars, then we ought to just say, you know, this, this is, we're building for cars because that's what we're doing. At some point, we've got to say, we're going to build for people, and if you want to live here, leave some of your cars somewhere else. Because, you know, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, and, you know, we're pushing people to do biking, we're pushing people to use the water taxi, we're doing that, and we've got to be more, we've got to do more aggressive for other types of transportation, and that's a whole other discussion. But at some point, you know, and I know, I mean, I spoke last night at Bayview Community Association, and they want to put permit parking in, they already have permit parking, they want to extend it. And I basically said to them, you know, if you want to extend it, that's fine, but let me tell you something, if we extend it, all you people that have garages in the back of your house that you're using as man caves are not getting, you know, you're going to get one or two fewer parking permits than everybody else, and you're going to take your beer out of there and you're going to park your car in it. And, you know, and those folks weren't happy with me, as you can imagine. But I said, you know, you got 1,000 parking spaces and you got 3,000 cars, you know, but everybody, nobody wants to be inconvenienced. Nobody wants to give up anything, but everybody wants the problem solved, you know? Who are the crazy people here? I mean, you know, at some point, somebody's got to look in a mirror and say, you know, I got to give up a little bit to solve this problem. But if everybody's going to say, you know, that in my house, in my, you know, 14 feet by 60 feet, I'm going to keep it the way I want it, and I'm going to have it the way I want it, and to hell with everybody else, then we're never going to solve these problems. So, at some point, you know, we've got to find some of these solutions, and at some point, people are just going to have to say, I can't have three cars, or I'd love to have a 22-foot-long truck, but I live, you know, in the middle of Fell's Point, and there's no parking for that truck. So, you know, like I say, I love to agree with my colleague, we've agreed about 95% in this code, but this is one thing that is, you know, a big issue for both of us, and we'll have to talk about it more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is councilwoman Middleton?
I just want to, I guess, make a statement. I'm listening to both of you, and I want to say that's the beauty of Baltimore City, because I have a district that really doesn't have extremely bad parking problems, as you do. And we have to be careful of how we word things, because we're doing it for the entire Baltimore City. You know, areas like Ashburton and Windsor Hills, and they don't have the kinds of parking problems that you have in, right in Canton and so on. So, the wording is, it just, you know, you're going to have another group of people upset if you restrict someone from having three cars when they can have, you know, properties that have three and four cars, and they, you know, garages, and they have that space. So, we do have to be careful of how we make restrictions and, you know, define the areas. You shaking your head no?
No, no, no. Go ahead.
Oh.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Henry.
No, the chair was merely pointing out that every time I raise my hand to talk, it adds five minutes or longer to the total length of the, here. I'm just going to take this moment to make my regular pitch for, this might be one of those situations where we can find a conditional by ordinance solution to the issue so that we can address these kind of cases. Pardon? Is it on? Conditional by ordinance, because that is, that's the ultimate tool for addressing, you know, addressing a problem that is a problem in one place, but not a problem for the other. It does not address my colleague's general point from the first district in terms of, at some point, Baltimore needs to make a commitment to what kind of city it wants to be, and I look forward to that larger conversation of, you know, that would include the question of, are we going to be in the mass transit game as a city? And how are we going to move our people around if we're not going to build for cars? Which I think is going to be a great conversation.
I mean, there's some colleagues, some councilpeople, like councilman McCray, councilman Costello, and even part of my, a little part of my district has those issues. But, Ms. Floyd, you want to
Right, just a couple of observations on this section that we're talking about on 270, the section 16-503 that we've been talking about. So, just to comment on a couple of things that I heard, if I might, because this is an issue that we're really thinking about in our neighborhood a lot right now. I would take exception, in a couple of ways, I would take exception to the comment that a parking space is a parking space is a parking space, an on-street space and an off-street space. First of all, this is actually a section about off-street parking. So, I think that you might be stretching it a little bit to talk about including an on-street parking regulation of some sort. You're getting kind of close to something like that in this one section, because you're talking about how it's going to be used, and it's going to be available to everyone 24 hours and that kind of thing. So, it's an off, it's a part, it's a section of the code about off-street parking, but then it starts talking about how the on-street parking is going to be used. So, that's a little tricky, I think. The difference between the two things, we know, those of us who, everybody who's not in this room right now knows, that there's a big difference between a space on the street that is there all night long, that anyone can use, and that same space in a privately-controlled lot with a gate across it, that's going to sit there all night long, empty. Nobody's going to use that space. Those are two very different parking spaces, one's on-street and one's off-street. Another example of how different they are is when the, when the snow emergency route is in effect, when the snow emergency is in effect, and you have to move your car from that street space, and then you move it to a private parking lot, and then it gets towed, you, again, you know, there's a difference. There's a real difference between that on-street space and that off-street space. There are tons of differences, and we're aware of them all the time. It's kind of stunning to hear that there's an agency that deals with parking that thinks they're the same.
Thank you. Anyone else on page 270? We are now on page two. We're now on page 271. Councilwoman Clark, you have amendments
I do.
On page 271, what, two, 273? Yeah, go ahead.
271, let me make sure I hit everything. Yeah.
Thirty-four to 37, if I'm correct.
Yes, my next amendment six is on page 271 from lines 34 to 37. And it talks about zoning districts that are exempt from off-street parking requirements. Now, I take out, I remove, I delete District C1 from being exempted from the normal parking requirements of C1. That's the amendment. Okay?
Any
Then, all right? Amendment seven, I recommend to delete in its entirety the section called C, which is square footage exemptions for C2. And this is a formula that basically waives C2s first 2,500 square feet as computing at all, exempting them from computing for off-street parking requirements for the given use. And going over to the next page, they do exempt from the exemption a shopping center. My, the C2s that are in my district are on West 36th Street in Hamden, and on Greenmount Avenue and Waverly mainly. I'd just like to get, I don't understand why we're doing this. I just don't understand why we're waiving all that, and that's what my recommendation is.
Again, for the committee's benefit, I think the councilwoman's amendments do conflict with the agencies in a couple areas, but just to give you some background on the exemptions, the C1, C1E, and we, agencies added C1VC, these are our little, very small, low-scale commercial areas. For the most part, they are completely built up with buildings that tend to fill their lot. They might have one space in the back. It's very important for the strength of our neighborhood commercial to keep these buildings occupied. And if they have to go through another hoop to apply for a variance, it adds the risk that they will not be occupied. And our commercial corridors are something we struggle with, they're very important to their neighborhoods, and we heard loud and clear from Main Street and others that we want this tool to facilitate occupying our commercial corridors. As far as the C2, the agency amendments recommended upping that to 3,000 as opposed to 2,500. Again, these are for existing buildings on commercial corridors where we're struggling to keep those buildings occupied. And, you know, if you go back to, backwards in terms of requiring more parking, we will continue to increase the hurdles to occupy these important areas.
So, the cities' main streets support, you had input on this?
Yes, absolutely. They were really the impetus. We met many times with the, you know, the Main Street leaders as a group, and this was very, very important to them.
Do you have any main streets in your district?
I do, Waverly. Hamden is no longer, they graduated from the Main Street program.
Yes.
2,500 square feet is, look, here's the deal. At least there's a motive, at least there's an effort to find off-street parking, or do valet, or do something in this, these situations. There, I mean, when's the last time in my district that someone was turned down in one of those locations because of a lack of off-street parking? one of those locations because of a lack of off-street parking? But sometimes what they do is they make up for it by finding an adjacent lot that they can rent a number of spaces on, et cetera. At least there's a motive to try to do something about the on-street parking. And I, it's not as if a whole bunch of people are running down to the zoning board all the time demanding they not open this or that business because, and these are, and I'm talking about new businesses, I'm talking about rolling over businesses. People don't run down in those two areas and demand strict adherence. But the fact of the requirement for new businesses coming into a place that's not even a business to have to worry about off-street parking comes up, makes people come up with creative ideas.
Will, the, the one last thing that we'll add, I mean, obviously the council will make, the committee will make a decision on this. It is a tough issue, but what the Main Street people really told us very loud and clear is that these businesses coming in, they want parking as badly as anybody wants it. And they will, regardless of the need for a variance, try to meet the needs for their business. It, they, they recognize that. But a nu, it, it's, it's the small business hurdle that we were trying to recognize here in some of these exemptions.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, just to, to tag on, I have two main streets. I have Fells Point and I have Highland Town. We have a good number of vacant buildings in Highland Town, but we have no parking and we have no place to build parking. We have the parking lot, which is full a lot. I get behind the, the new parking lot, but behind the library. But, you know, which we get complaints about from some of the businesses because they can't, people can't park in there because they're, it's full. Which is good for the park, you know, but there's not enough parking in it. But going back, you know, full circle, you want to fill these buildings and you want to get the tenants. And when somebody leaves, you want to have someone take their place. But even if you put a requirement and you said to the, and the person said, "I'm willing to provide parking, I'm even willing to pay to help contribute to parking," there's no place to, to put it. I mean, there's no land to, to put the parking, the physical parking structure or whatever. And, you know, and so you try to, like, work out with a bank or work out with something like that that has parking that may not be, being used during the evening or on the weekend. And unless they're willing to cooperate with you, then you're stuck with no parking. So there has to be some sort of flexibility that says, while you want the people to either have it or attempt to find it, that in the event neither of those are possible, you don't want to prevent the development and/or reuse of the property for failure to be able to, to have it or find it. And, and I don't know quite how we do that, but I think that we've, we've got to try to find a way to do that.
Okay. So where we at?
We're, um...
We finished page 272?
Um, no. I've got...
Page 272?
We just finished.
No, I'm still on page 272.
Amendment nine.
Amendment nine.
It's in page 272, nine through 17. Row House Dwelling?
Uh, no, I'm at Row House Dwelling, yes. I don't know what I, excuse me one second. Well, I see what I've said here. D, 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 D. Oh, I, yes, I was, first of all, recommending to delete lines four to eight in which if you, if, if, if you're one of these commercial places, I don't know how this fits in, I guess you just got the first 2,500 square feet waived. Now you still need two off-street parking spaces, then that means you need none. I, I'd like to delete that section. I'm sure my colleagues would not agree.
Okay.
And then I would go to 27, uh, and that's, I would, remember that amendment nine is, I would delete in its entirety E Row House Dwelling from lines nine to 17. And I believe that, nine to 17. Let me just read what I, what I wrote, what, what it is that I wrote about for one second. Oh, it's just a section that, it's a section that said, that, that now says all the reasons that a, a row house is being constructed or reconstructed or something.
Did you go to the zoning board?
It should go, I, I want it to go to the zoning board. It says, "No off-street parking spaces need be provided if any of the following circumstances are met." And then there, there wasn't any off-street parking before, there's a street, there's a depth, there's a, in other words, why are we putting this in here? Why do we just blanket say it's, it's okay from all these different reasons not to have an off-street parking space for your house if the code would otherwise require one? I, I mean, you're right. I'm not with, I'm not with jamming things in to small spaces that are too small to accommodate them. I, I understand my colleagues' concerns. That district is so overbuilt and it's not even done that, no, I mean, of course, they can't park. Of course you, I mean, it's a whole, it's a, I don't want to live in, I don't want that kind of situation.
Okay.
And so I, I do worry about making right-of-way parking spaces count against required off-street spaces. I do worry about these things. So I don't want, as some, I don't want to be canton. I love to go there. It's, I, you know, it's fun when kids come into town. We, I, I want to live with some space, a little bit of space, a little bit of room, a little bit of peace.
Well, anybody?
And that's, I see this jamming of things as moving toward, there's a tipping point. I, I don't know what it is. And maybe it's someplace between Craft and Clark.
Again, this is trying to give some flexibility. This section is actually aimed for rebuilding.
Yes, I know.
House burns, house burns to the ground or a vacant infill lot. Why hold that property owner to a higher standard than essentially what exists?
Because, because my district is full in Hamden of side yards that every time there's a side yard, however modest, here comes somebody that wants to build a house on it, get variances and jam it in so that he can make some money in a thriving community like that. And I want that side yard to have requirements attached to it that make it less jammed in. That's why.
You wouldn't want to represent Councilman Craft's district or Councilman?
No, no, no. And he, no, 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 it's a whole different situation. I've acknowledged that, that it's a different place. It's the entertainment zone. It's the, it's sort of, it's, you know, restaurants and water and boats and it's great.
Well, it's, it's your amendment.
Yep, that's what I want.
Yes, sir. You want to?
All right.
Respawn?
My name is Gregory Friedman. I've been blogging about these work sessions for the Citizens Planning and Housing Association, and they're included in our weekly newsletter. I'm not really authorized to speak for CPHA, so I don't want you to think that anything I say is being said on behalf of CPHA, though I have written articles that have been approved by CPHA staff on this subject.
So this is your personal?
Well, this is, this is, I just want to give some background. It's sort of my personal thing. But even though CPHA's position is very similar. I just want to note that part of the reason we see things like, you know, why they put payment in lieu of parking, land banks, reductions in minimum parking requirements, that sort of thing, is because in about the year 2000, around that time, UCLA econ, UCLA professor of planning, Donald Shoup, wrote this book called "The High Cost of Free Parking." And this, it's a 100, it's a 750-page book on parking. I confess, I haven't read it all because it's 750 pages, but...
I like you better already.
What, what it basically, what, you know, he, he addresses parking. And what his central thesis is, is that parking, overabundance of parking has just incredible, incredibly devastating impacts to our urban environment. He's described parking spaces as, I think he says, "A fertilizer for cars." And he also mentions that parking requirements in general are not very accurate at all. They're just the way they calculate them. And so that's why we're seeing things like reduction in parking requirements. In some places, they're exempt from parking requirements. On the payment in lieu of parking, that's something that came out of his book. Maybe Baltimore's not ready for that, but that's where it came from. So I just want to recognize, I just, I just hope the council is aware of that, the consequences of providing so much parking and perhaps to not think about, you know, making such, I, I, I think, you know, like Councilman Craft said, we have to build for people, not cars. You know, I think of Hamden and how, if Hamden was built today, it couldn't be built today because it would be illegal due to all the parking requirements. But people want to live in Hamden because they can walk places. And that would be sort of impossible. So I, I really hope that, you know, maybe, you know, you can talk with some of the planners, if you have any friends who are planners or into smart growth, I'm sure they know about this. And I, I really hope that, that you seriously consider the impact, like, the, the impact of removing the, of, of keeping these, of getting rid of how positive it could be to ease up on the parking requirements. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We are joined by Councilman Nick Mosby, a member of the Transportation, uh, National Transportation Committee. Anyone else on page 272?
Tell them.
So Councilwoman, you, you did amendment nine on page 272, right?
I've done, I'm all the way through my nine amendments and I only have a couple left, two.
Any, anyone else on page 272? No? We are now going to page 273, subtitle seven, which is the required bicycle parking. So...
This is for when Disney comes to Baltimore?
Disney comes to Baltimore.
What? What is it? Disney?
So, so, so Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark?
I have a, I have two amendments, but they're not right at the beginning of this section. I presume that...
So yours is 276?
Six.
276, I'm sorry. I apologize. So does anyone have any amendments on, discussion on page 273 regards to required bicycle parking? I was looking at the wrong...
This is all the, I mean, at the beginning is, you know, just stuff.
Page 274. Anyone have anything on page 274 for amendments for discussion? Okay, we're looking at page two, 275.
What would you do without me?
Anyone on 275? No? Okay. Now we are, now we are on, I jumped the gun. Now we are on page 276. Councilwoman Clark, you're looking at amendment 10 on page 276, 22 through 25.
This is similar, this is where I got myself mixed up with 50%. This is similar to the amendment I made pages ago on deferring the certain percentage of required...
Number of places.
Of vehicle spaces. Now I'm doing that with bicycle spaces. So basically, I'm asking, I'm amending so that the, instead of the director of planning, that the zoning board authorize the deferral of up to, it's proposed up to 50% of the bicycle spaces required in a development. I'm authorize, that be, it be the zoning board that may authorize the deferral of up to 25%, not 50%, and certainly at its public hearings, not in some closed-door session where nobody knows what's happening. So that's my amendment there.
Is there any response from any of the agencies, planning or parking on this? This is why I wish, Angie, again, DOT should have been here.
We, you know, prefer certainly as written to not have to go through that additional hoop, but it, we'll defer to the committee.
What, the zoning, you mean, board?
Right. Because land banking by definition leaves the land there. It leaves the space. And that's why we did not think someone needed to go through a hearing process in either scenario for land banking because it by definition reserves the area. So if there's a mistake or a problem, the area didn't go away.
I, I, I understand your, the perspective of that opinion. I just want people to know that that is being proposed and have a chance to weigh in. Who knows if the zoning board will pay attention, but at least they'll know it happened and that they won't wonder what, what happened here. They'll know. But otherwise, they won't. A decision like that will be made. Now, Jew is, I mean, we're talking about...
It would be quite visible.
Huh?
I, I think people would know because it's going to be visible.
But it will already have been done. That's the point. Now, I don't know what this 750 pages taught, said about bikes, but I think they're still good guys, at least.
I, I was talking both types of land banking, whether it's for cars or for bikes collectively. Again, by definition, the land would stay vacant.
I, I hear you.
And the community or neighbors would have every opportunity to say, you know what, you should increase the parking, clearly your lot is full, and see that extra green space. So that is why we did not require a public hearing.
But if I may say, neighbors wouldn't know if they didn't have a public process that there was a land banking, that there was a deferral of required spaces, and that they had every right and reason to ask for that deferral to be lifted and the spaces provided. So how do people know all these things if they don't at least see a sign that says, "Come to the hearing, we're getting rid of 25% of the spaces"?
Councilwoman, I, I understand because, I mean, no offense to any agencies, but if I'm saying this correctly, again, I might disrespect any agencies, but regards to bureaucracy, to leave it up to the hands of bureaucracy, what she's stating.
Right. It's hard enough...
The public, the people...
Publicly.
Constituents can go in front of the zoning board and, and at least there's a, a public hearing.
They know what's happening to them.
Okay. All right. That's your, Councilwoman Clark's amendment. Anyone else? So that takes, that's amendment 10.
I have one more on this page and in this title.
Is that page?
Page 276. Page 276. And maybe I already have.
Forty? Okay.
I, I, it's, I'm getting rid of, I think planning will agree, fee in lieu of short-term bicycle parking reduction. In other words, paying, a developer paying the city money to get out of providing the number of bike parking spaces required, and the city dedicating without the ability to do so under the charter, that money to do something good for bikes. I, I'm just, I, I, that's, that's my last amendment. I, I think we already took out in lieu of, fee in lieu of vehicle parking spaces where you pay, a developer pays the city money to not have to provide the required number of parking spaces. This is that idea which came from wherever, to do this for bikes, and I presume that the city has changed its mind about the, the value of this idea at this point.
We have no objection.
Okay.
Okay, so is that?
I'm done. Yep.
Anyone else have any amendments for discussion on page 276? Okay. Any amendments for discussion on page 277? Same is on 278. Amendments for discussion on 278. Same, any amendments for discussion on page 279?
Well, I'd like to say, yeah.
Yeah, is that a?
I don't have it on a piece of paper, but I'd like to say that.
Where are you at?
I'm on page 279, line 21, 20 and 21.
21.
I, I'd just like to say that in a recurring way, every time the landscape manual is referred to as a source, there should be the phrase "as approved by city council ordinance."
So that's not an amendment you're just making?
No, it's an ongoing amendment that was suggested, and I, I would hope it would carry through to be adopted or rejected, but we've sort of agreed that, yeah. I just want to mention it every, every few titles. I'd like to mention it.
Um.
Anymore? I haven't read anymore.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for attending the, the work session today. Our next work session on City Council Bill 12 dash 0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning, is February the 18th of 2015. I want to thank everyone for attending. Please look around next to you, that, whatever you brought, make sure you take with you. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you.